All right. They had six o'clock, we'll call them any in order and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Take them, any other items to add to the agenda for tonight, other than the three that were added? See in your packet?
Nope, no.
Not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks Ryan.
Second.
Thanks Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Polls, thank you. Consent agendas, are there any item in there that you have questions about? Not, I will take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you Ryan.
Searl.
Thank you Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we have visitors to the council, we'll start with John Fox from the DC ambulance. If you'd come up to the podium, please.
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of that, but, oh shoot ski, my notes all went away. Um, let me, ah. All right, well, thanks for letting me come on in to just give a quick update and chat with you guys. I know our service has been trying to keep things up to date, we've been trying to have a couple of meetings, things that are happening along, but I'll just start with who I am again. My name is John Fox, I am the interim ambulance director for Dodge Center Ambulance. We are the ambulance service that covers the middle section, the middle third of the county, including Casson, Mantleville, Dodge Center, and Clermont are the municipalities we serve. Um, we exist for the person at the other end of the phone, whether they call us or not. Um, typically, we are seen or we look at and we talk about things like run numbers and how many calls to wherever we go. I like to think about what we're doing as providing the same service to every person in the community that we serve. Ready, when you pick up the phone, you will get a response. And so, for us to be able to do that, that's kind of our way we look at things. And so, whether you call us or not, we're going to be prepared, we're going to make sure we're staffed, we got the right trucks to do all those other things. And so, a part of that mission is to provide reliable, sustainable, and high-quality ambulance service. And we've been able to do that pretty well. I've just ran some statistics today, I can bore you with all of them, but our out-the-door time is under three minutes and we're a combination, so that's both in-house sometimes and not-in-house, so routinely, we're out the door in about three minutes. Our response times on average are about 12 minutes. I looked at specifically at our Casson zone, between Casson and, um, we measured the clinic differently, but the average there was 12.3 minutes, from time of dispatch to being on scene, which is well, well within our legal standard of 30 minutes, which we would be very upset if that's what we were doing, but national averages and benchmarks were well within that. Our medical director is very, very involved, keeps track of all the stuff that we're doing. So clinically, we're very, very happy with what we're doing and being able to provide that. We've been very, very lucky, um, that we have been able to keep a model of predominantly, um, we're able to provide very high-level clinical care with a staffing model that is predominantly a volunteer-based. It is technically paid on-call, they get a very whopping $4 an hour to be around and on-call, to go, same licensure, same all the other things that we have to do, but the vast majority out of our roster of 50, I would say about 35 or so, 40 are paid-on-call. Um, they're doing that for very, very little, um, compensation. When they go on a run, we wrap them up to a whole extra 12 bucks an hour. So for $15 an hour, $17 that they're on a good day because they've made here a couple of years, we're getting that kind of care for the bulk of our operation. We have a budget that's valued at about $1.3 million, although our budget itself is actually really only about $600,000 to $700,000. Where do we make up that, where do we make up that difference? In volunteer heavily subsidized labor. Well, we've been able to do that for quite some time, we were formed in 1974, we've been able to eke it out to this point, and that's actually kind of part of why I'm here today is just to simply give you that update. This sustainable, reliable is really, really threatened. And it's really easy for me to stand here and say that, except when we look at 2000, when we had the report that says we were in crisis, and then in 2016, when we said we were in crisis, and in 2021, when we said we were in crisis, and outstanding you heard today in crisis, well, how are we still getting trucks out the door? So we're pulling every rabbit out of the hat that we can. So, um, our organizational structure, we are city-owned, but we are an enterprise fund, we are living on our own devices, we get very, very little contributions. Um, we do, um, to the point of even my city administrator, city finance director, I pay out of my budget a percentage of their salary, like 5% or something like that. So it's, it's a pretty interesting thing, and I do have some, I can get you stuff if you want to see the budget, that's not that big of a deal. The big piece I wanted to talk about is just simply in general, EMS has traditionally been funded by fee-for-service, or billing the patient and/or their insurance. So in this case, we're billing insurance for the most part. But that is starting to dry up, in that we have the bulk of our insurers that we work with are governmental, Medicare, Medicare Advantage, and Medicaid. They do not pay what it costs, they know it doesn't pay what it costs, and they still say, hey, tough luck, take it or leave it. We have to take it, or we're going to really have some trouble, because then we have to go after the patient, and that's not right either. And so, we know we're working in a system that is not funded properly, there's no business in the world that we're trying to operate this way, yet we're being forced to do that. And so, all, however many thousands of people live in this community, they get that same benefit, they're getting that benefit on the few billable patients we can, that we're getting underpaid for, and the subsidized labor that we're getting from our staff. So, who's coming to help? Well, not a whole lot. Um, the federal government is actually, looks like they're actually cutting back, they've cut back on Medicaid right now, we're looking like we're going to have about a third of the Medicaid, eh, maybe a quarter, you might know better Senator, but we're going to be losing some Medicaid dollars. Um, so a large number of our patients that would normally be covered, or that may not be. The remaining, much of the remaining are now going to have a copay, so for example, seems like a $35 copay for a Medicaid patient doesn't seem like a big deal. Well, if they're already on Medicaid, they probably can't pay the $35 copay, and how am I going to get that as an ambulance service provider? I can't have a square machine in my, back of my ambulance and run to get their, their 35 bucks. We are going to be writing off another 35 bucks on all those patients, because it's going to be next to impossible to get that. Commercial insurance, commercial insurance is not paying. I have some interesting reading I did over lunch on, um, commercial insurance with the high deductible plans, which are so prevalent, they aren't even paying anything, and then now you have the $15,000 deductible, guess what? You're not paying me either, because you can't afford a $3,000 bill, or a $2,000, or $1,500, or whatever that is. So the feds aren't helping us. The state has been trying very hard, and I don't want to steal Senator Nelson's thunder, so, uh, they have been very engaged this last two years, we've been extremely happy that they've been engaged. It's not enough. They've been helping a lot in how do we find and break down barriers for people to come into the profession. One of the sad stats we have right now is, we are losing more people each year than are coming in. So last cycle for recertification, we lost a net 4,000 licensed providers in the state. So 4,000 people more left than came into becoming paramedics and EMTs. So, we already have that problem. A new grad nurse, no shift differential, no nothing, makes more than a 20-year medic. Just saying, those are some of those differentiations. So how do I get somebody to come do what we do for as little as we're doing it, when they can go on to other parts of healthcare? And we are healthcare. So, uh, they've done a great job though of trying to help us with scholarships, uh, earning while you learn, which is an interesting program, except I can maybe get some money for that, I can get you to come out in and be my, I'll pay you a wage to go to school, take that, and then when you graduate, come do it for free for me. And if, that model doesn't work. So, it's a great idea, it's really going to benefit very large systems. So, the state has done a nice job, the two pieces for direct help last year, the state has about a $50 million subsidy across the state in volunteer labor. We went to the legislature and said, hey, we need that. They gave us $24 million, so half of what we really needed, that was great. Now, this session, we got something, again, for emergency, where we're completely, if we were completely upside down, we got $8,000, or $8 million a year for two years. And that has to be an actual operating loss. So that doesn't even cover it. I probably will not be eligible for it, because we can barely, we barely squeak by because of the volunteer labor. The other thing that was very helpful is, it's unique in Minnesota, is the uncompensated care pool. If we come to do an evaluation, there is no insurance, nobody else can pay for it, we can then ask for a portion of that, and that is, I believe, $8 million a year over the next two years as well. And so, we can maybe get something, that's totally new in Minnesota, again, coming up way short of what we need. So, when we get right back down to it, so who's coming to help? Nobody in depth, there isn't one silver bullet to any of this, and so it's a combination of all of it. So why am I here today? What interest do you have in the city of Casson to, to be able to help that? If you pick up the phone, we're going to come, we have to come, we're legally obligated to, and we're morally obligated to, we're going to come. But, how long are we able to do that? And how long will you be able to have some influence in how that happens? Because there is nobody else coming, if we fail, the only other place that can do it is probably the big neighbors to our, on either side of us. They probably will, but it will not be a post, it will not be a base, they will stop, they will post, and they will come from that far away. So we have increased response times, we have all those other things, and you will have zero save, no save, when you want to start talking to that big, big organization, and you want to make some headway, that's up to you guys on how to handle that. What we're offering and what we're asking for is that local control, that local influence. And so, however we come to that, it's great. So, fast forward to the big meetings that we've been continuing to have. And it's not working through the perfect, because I would love it to be just set in stone, or off we go. At the same time, we've made a lot of progress. So, um, in the last two years, AJ, my predecessor, had done some work, uh, the townships have all been looking at and recognized, so, um, four out of the six townships have already contributed voluntarily, and we are way, way, way happy about that. Because it's money that we didn't have, we recognize that they want this service to be in their community, they want to help. It's going to be primarily aimed at capital, but not necessarily, but we can certainly benchmark or earmark it to that. Either way we go, we are, um, looking out ahead at some, some pretty big expenses, and I'll get to those in just a minute. But, before the townships have donated anywhere from $3,000 up to $15,000, um, some of them, they just rounded up, or kind of came into it. Uh, we had a formula someplace of our, we had an anticipated operating loss of about $300,000 was what we were looking to help build up and operating, to making sure our cash flow is where it's supposed to be, that we have a capital improvement plan. Um, just for example, last year, we bought a new truck, uh, $270,000 for the truck. We're looking at 300 and a lead time of about two years on new vehicles right now. So we're already starting to, probably within 18 months, going to have to start shopping and specing out for a new truck, just so we can get those going. In any case, where I was going with that, so, the, the big pitch and the big piece is just something for you to continue to consider, we appreciate, uh, Mitch has been going, we've been, everybody's been showing up, we've been having great conversations, I don't know if the answers are there, that I get your name wrong, I probably blew that already. I'm, I'm getting there, um, uh, I have some other documents, but the gist is, in about five years, if we don't change any other model, we're going to be upside down, probably half a million by 2030 is our projections from our financial folks. We're not sure how that's going to fix. So, with that, um, I just want to say that every place I've worked, every place I've done consulting, I also sit on the ambulance association for Minnesota's ambulance association board, almost every locality that lost their local service has really not been super happy. I will admit, no matter what happens, somebody will come. It's just how long and what influence you're going to have in that. And so, we would ask, um, that the municipalities are able to see it and want to help contribute, we aren't asking for anything in blood or long-term contract, but if you find it in your heart to give us a hand to kind of help bridge those gaps, to help us find bigger, longer-term solutions, um, we would certainly entertain the voluntary contributions. But, ultimately, it comes back to what you guys want, and how much say you want in your local service. That's the end of my little spiel, and I kind of got off the rails, because I get kind of passionate about this stuff, so I'm open to any questions you'd like.
What did we donate last year at the end, at our summer meeting that we discussed?
Well, we made an allocation budget, I don't think there was any contribution.
None that I've seen yet, yeah.
Other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the time, guys.
Up next, we'll have Carla Nelson, Senator Carla Nelson.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, councilors, it's great to be with you today. I'm pleased to be your partner at the state legislature as we serve our, our constituents, our joint constituents. I am Senator Nelson, I'm in my fifth term in the Minnesota State Senate. I serve you on taxes, bonding, jobs, transportation, and pensions. Uh, and over the years, have served on a number of other committees as well. And I, well first, let me just say, thank you, John, I, I agree with everything that he said, um, so, and then these are a few more, just, thank you. Um, just some, uh, reading there for you at a later time. But, uh, it is a problem, uh, the EMS, uh, funding is, is a major problem. And I am glad for the investment that we've made so far, but I am, uh, I know that is not the end at all, and I think the one thing I would add to what John said is, is we talk about, as you know, but we just cannot let the record not show, that having, um, longer times to service is a life and death issue many times. So, we're not just talking about the convenience of a few minutes, so. Uh, and, but what I thought I might do tonight is just, um, give you a little bit of, um, some, oh, I, I lost my notes, we're going to have to go from memory here, uh, that's okay. I thought I would tell you just a little bit about the legislative session, uh, particularly things that might be important to you, and then, um, obviously, open it up for questions, if you'd like. One thing I can say is, um, as I said, it's my fifth term, but I have to say it was the most unusual of terms, and we use this a lot, we use the word historic, but I'm going to say this was an incredibly historic term. Uh, first, the voters in November of 2024, they couldn't be anymore divided. They sent 100 Republicans to the legislature and 101 Democrats to the legislature. Uh, there's 134 House members and 67 senators, evenly divided, except in the, in the Senate, it's, uh, 33 Republicans and 34 Democrats, that's what the legislators sent. Um, and then, of course, I mean, we, we have not, never seen anything like this either, um, because, the division has happened before, but not quite like this. Uh, got off a bit to a rocky start, there was a, kind of like a three-week boycott there, but part of the boycott, interestingly enough, was because the judges refused to seat one of the elected, in this case, it was a Democrat, from, um, I think, the Roseville area, because he didn't live in the district. Well, I mean, the Constitution does say you have to live in the district. So, so there was an open seat, and that kind of led to three weeks of boycotting, and what we didn't know would happen, I, I don't think anybody really figured it out. So, many of us, we get our bills ready during the interim, you know, we're here, we're finding out what's important to our constituents, and then we have those bills drafted, and then you, I, I, as a Senate author, then of course, I send, I have the yellow jackets, I send the green jackets over to the House, so those bills can be making it through the House process, and of course, I, you know, pick the, pick the House member I think will, you know, be on that committee, or able to lead well on that bill. So we did all that, I did all that, uh, but I didn't know that all those bills that were introduced during the boycott actually were just nothing. And all of those bills had to be reintroduced into the House three weeks later, and, but the interesting thing is, they didn't go to the same authors, I don't know how, they just divvied them out. So anyway, I would just say it was a little bit, uh, confusing. Um, the other areas where it was historic, um, is, you know, we've had six, we will have had six special elections since the voters sent representatives to the House and Senate. Uh, that's historic by all manner, and, um, some of them have been deaths, unexpected deaths of servants in office, some have been, uh, criminal things, uh, we're glad that all of those now have, have, will have, are no longer in the Senate. Um, and then there was the horrible murders that happened on June 14th, that I think, I, I, I think it has changed the legislature, I think it will continue to change the legislature. Uh, we really have to focus on, uh, talking about the issues, and I'm sure it doesn't happen here, but sometimes it does happen at the legislature, where people actually do character assassination, or dehumanizing one another, and we, we just can't do that. Uh, we just need to make sure that we're focusing on the issues. So it was historic in every way, and I would say the budget was historic as well, we've had a little bit of budget whiplash, uh, as you know, uh, as the end of the 2023 year, uh, or the 2024 year, uh, of course, we had quite a budget surplus, $18 billion, actually, I'm sorry, end of 2022, there was reelection, and so 2023 started our budget year with a $18 billion surplus, and, uh, but the irony or the whiplash was, we were left with a $6 billion projected budget hole. And so, that was, I would say, some budget whiplash, should, should not have happened. And so, to the small amount of EMS funding, uh, I think it was amazing when you're looking at a $6 billion budget deficit to really see any new money, but to that point, it is one-time money, and there's still much work to do. So yes, it was, it was historic in many ways. Um, some of the things that I, I know you'll be interested in, uh, most of my cities are, and I think I have it on your sheet there, what happened to the Casson LGA local government aid? Um, you might be looking at that and thinking, wow, that's, uh, that's really not much, uh, what was it, a $300 increase per, or $4,000 increase? Um, and you spud that out over all the needs and the increase in costs, and you might be thinking, well, that's not such a great thing. But I know you were following it, I want to make sure your constituents were too. The proposals to solve the $6 billion, uh, projected deficit were to dramatically reduce LGA. So sometimes you have to count wins as things that didn't happen. And so I think it was a great thing, the League of Minnesota Cities has a very strong presence uh, at the Capitol, and, uh, very, um, very respected, made very great arguments, as did the legislators, why this would be so horrendously impactful for our constituents, for the cuts in LGA. So, the good news is there weren't reductions in LGA, uh, and, and so, we're, we're glad about that. Um, some of the other things that you might, I, I have to tell you, this was a bonding year, and, uh, I, I have to say the bonding proposal, while it didn't, while part of it was focused on things that really had no right to be bonding, I will say. But much of it was focused on those things that we should be supporting, wastewater, PFA, Public Facilities Authority, those type of things, those are good things, and they serve our joint constituents well. Uh, but it, roads and bridges. But what I would say is very frustrating, but not a single priority from Dodge County, or Olmsted County, or Casson, or Rochester, Stewartville, Dodge Center, Mantleville, Bylin, none of those cities, towns, or counties' priorities were touched. That was shocking, uh, and even when we had Highway 14, which was shovel-ready, we got the, uh, planning, money ready for that, we got that passed in the previous years, uh, you know, County 3 and County 5 there over, uh, in Olmsted County, we know that's important here, that comes right through here, um, that did not pass, so that was incredibly frustrating. Uh, and I, no mistake though, there was one thing that passed for, um, Olmsted County, but it wasn't on anyone's priority list, it was on, I don't know, some legislator's priority list, but, anyway, a skate park, so there was a bit of a skate park that was funded in the bonding bill, which, again, might have been, I think, could have been spent better. I could go on and on and talk to you about different things, and where I thought there were some maybe misplaced priorities, things we could do better, but mostly, I don't want to use up your time, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, and if you and your, um, councilors have questions or comments, I'll be glad to get to those, but I know you have a full agenda too. And I, but I will speak to security, I forgot, if you'd like, I know, we had mentioned that, um, security is a bit of a concern for everyone, of course, always, especially after the targeting of elected officials. And, um, there are some things that have been done, I noticed that, um, it was kind of just tucked in there, but I think it was very wise that judges, the addresses and phone numbers of judges have now been removed from public records. Uh, and the Secretary of State actually just, uh, maybe last week, did that for all legislators. He took all legislators' address and phone numbers off the public Secretary of State records. Now that does present a bit of a, you know, we're, we're all elected officials here, and we have to be accountable to the public, and so, and they have to know how to reach us. Um, and so, what, how do we do that? But it also has to be safe at the same time. I did notice this week that our, uh, officials out in Washington DC, they don't even have public email addresses, I thought that was kind of interesting. Um, but, so, there, there's a lot more work to do there, I know, it could be that local units of government may want to also pursue, I don't know at this point if there's, um, a law that needs to be changed to allow local units of government to have those addresses and names, uh, and, um, phones private or not. It might be so, I don't know, but it's interesting that the Secretary of State had the ability to do that without going to the legislature, so I'm sure that's something we'll take a look at. We'll also be taking a look at security at the Capitol, which has a large number of builders, you probably heard about last weekend, the gentleman who had broken to the Capitol three times last weekend. Uh, Friday night, he broke in, uh, after hours, he was escorted out. He broke in again that same weekend, escorted out. The third time, same weekend, he broke in again, this time into the Senate chamber, uh, went up to the Senate dais, sat at the Senate President's chair, and disrobed, and was sitting there naked. So I'm just saying that I think that should be a warning sign to all of us, that I think, um, we need to take security seriously, I know we are, but at the same time, we have to make sure that we are accessible to the public, so I think these are conversations that will continue on, so. Mr. Mayor, or members, if you have any comments, questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Do you have a couple of questions?
Well, I just have a couple of things, just to talk about. Thank you so much for coming, we really appreciate your support for our bonding requests in the past, I don't know if you saw that construction as you drove into town?
We did.
That's part of that project.
That's my deal, I'm very glad.
Do you think it's likely that they'll have a, a bonding bill this year, or, or not? In the next cycle?
Yes, we never know, I certainly hope so, I was told so, I was promised there would be one, because the one that came out this year, like I said, had nothing, uh, for, for, for my constituents, um, except the skate park. Um, so, I think that, um, I'm hopeful, I'm, I'm very hopeful, uh, um, but you never know, you never know what's going to happen with the legislature. And a, a lot of it depends on how the budget holds up. Uh, so far, you know, we get those monthly reports, I'm sure you get them, we're a little bit, um, positive over projections, so that's good. Um, so we'll just have to kind of wait and see, but there is appetite for a bonding bill in the legislature. And as you know, that is the only bill, when you have, um, in the Senate, for, for example, 34 Democrats, 33 Republicans, that's the only bill that requires a Republican vote. Uh, it requires several, actually, because bonding bills are borrowing, and so they have a, a 60% threshold to pass, a little harder to pass, but I think that should make sure that we get better bills.
And I have another question, uh, thank you for that. You may be seeing us come to you for, for a sewer project or a water project, so, there you go.
Oh, uh, can I say something about that?
Sure.
Is it bonding for next year?
Uh, it's possible.
Possible, we want to get on that right away, uh, we have a bonding tour coming up, I've already got my projects sent, oh, I think I sent you something. Uh, so make sure we get on that right away, uh, because we want to get on the bonding tour, we want to get that project in front of the bonding committee right away. The bonding tour this year is not coming if those forms are not filled out on the MMD website, so make sure to fill out those forms for your project, yeah.
Um, one question that I know I hear a lot, for, we're a school-heavy, and you've done a lot, so much work on education, and we really appreciate that, I know our teachers, um, are, are doing the best they can, um, well, the unfunded mandates, that the legislature seems to be, not to pick on anyone in particular, but seems to be creating, the state government seems to be saying, that are costing your school more and, and being detrimental, I mean, can you speak to that a little bit?
Oh my goodness, that was one of the most horrendous things, quite frankly, was, uh, the unfunded mandates that passed, particularly, I don't know why they were, they were so hard on the schools, but the schools got hit with-
hit with more unfunded mandates than any. Now, most of us, a lot of us, believe that actually, schools are best managed with locally-controlled school boards, not the state of Minnesota. And I'm not saying that those mandates weren't, well, I will say, they were not well thought out. We knew exactly what would happen when suddenly schools are paying for lunches for every child, lunch and breakfast. And we knew that not only would it cost money, but I was right up there on the Senate's floor saying, well, you will no longer have a proxy for poverty, so you will be losing all of your compensatory funding. So it was kind of like a double hit. But those things went unheeded, and I think, I don't know how we're going to solve that unless there's new people with ideas that realize that's not the best thing to do.
Well, I appreciate you fighting for our local school district, for sure. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah.
That's all I've got, so. Anybody else have any questions? No. I do appreciate you stopping by.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I forgot to mention, the League does a great job, League of Minnesota Cities, bringing things to the Capitol. You folks are at the Capitol. Really greatly appreciate that, and so thank you so very much.
One minute before you sit down.
Yeah.
Talk about the League. We just got a letter stating that you've been, representing your state legislators, been selected a League of Minnesota Cities Legislature of Distinction for 2025.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That means really a lot to us.
Thank you.
We're doing good work, and the League notices it, too, so we appreciate it.
It means a lot to me. We share the same constituents. We just have to work through these things. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Aaron Johnson from Smith.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. It's an honor to be here today. Yep, my name is Aaron. I am the new philanthropy director with Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. So I'm just excited to present to you a summary of our latest work in your community and across the region, and then also present as well opportunities that you might find beneficial to your community. Starting out, I'm just going to give a brief presentation on what we do and our latest focus. Whoops. So Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation is a donor-supported foundation. We invest for economic growth in the 20 counties of south-central and southeastern Minnesota. This includes 175 communities and one Native Nation. Our key interests include entrepreneurship, early childhood development, community vitality. Those are our three areas of focus. So far, we've invested $170 million in the region since 1986. Starting out with entrepreneurship, our main goal here is to make sure entrepreneurs in our region have what they need, the resources they need to thrive. We do this first and foremost through lending, so we are a gap lender, and we work in partnership with other organizations to meet the entrepreneur's needs. We can help those who are starting out, all the way up to equity investments. One of the great benefits of partnering with Smith on a loan package is that even if we are a small part, we can provide one-on-one technical assistance tailored to that individual's needs. In everything that we do, we aim to be accessible, and we aim to overcome extra obstacles that some people face. The Prosperity Initiative, this is one of our areas of programming that serves traditionally entrepreneurs from racially ethnic minority groups and who identify as women, veterans, persons with a disability, people below the federal poverty level threshold, LGBTQIA+ persons, and so many more. We provide 12 months of one-on-one coaching tailored for that individual, so. Another program I want to mention is REV, Rural Entrepreneurial Ventures Program, and this is a program that we come into the community and look at who's here and build up from the ground. I believe actually, I believe you guys.
We are.
Yep, you are. Thank you. Thank you. So yeah, you guys are familiar, but yeah, that's another aspect of our programming. Moving down the list, early childhood, our goal here is to make sure that children are ready to learn by age three. It's statistically shown that if they aren't, it's very hard to catch up, and we want everyone to have a chance to be successful members of our communities. Also, as I'm sure all of you are aware, we are in the middle of a childhood, excuse me, a nationwide childcare shortage, meaning that not all of our kids have a place to go with quality care. And also, this means that parents need to leave the workforce. So we're tackling this by supporting current providers. We provide free, develop-approved training, both virtually and in person. Develop-approved means that they receive their needed education, continuing education credits by attending. We serve around 1,000 annually this way. We also have a consultant who will work with a community who wants to examine their shortage needs and develop a plan. This is someone that I can put you in contact with in our office. Lastly, we provide grants in this area as well. For example, our Early Care and Education Grant. This is to support children with social, emotional support needs, mental and physical support. Many times, this translates into additional trainings for providers and professionals, anyone who works with children. Also, we give out around 30,000 books a year by partnering with ABDO and Capstone Publishers out of Lancaster. And this is for children to keep and build their library, and we really believe the power in a book and having books available to children. Moving on, last but not least, community vitality. This is our last area of focus here. This is focused on our smaller communities, typically with populations under 10,000. We have, for example, the Small Town Grant Program, which is focused on collaboration and belonging, bringing those into and fostering those, growing those organically in small communities. Also, Paint the Town, promoting community beautification, volunteerism, and engagement. We do not do paint for meals, historic structures, public art, the community rallies, and does the rest, makes it happen. And finally, our affiliate fund program, under which we have 147 funds. We are the 501(c)(3) fiscal host. Of those, 33 are community foundations. We feel that community foundations are essential, an essential element for keeping small towns vibrant. We do all the administrative back-end work, taxes, legal, you name it. And this frees up the board of that community foundation to focus on the community and the needs and the mission. I'm happy to connect you with our office if you need any more information about that. Right now, if you know, look in your packet, this sheet right here kind of gives you a breakdown of how your dollars translate from Dodge County. So for every dollar that is donated from Dodge County, $35 are invested back into Dodge County communities in the form of our grants, loans, and programming. So far, 43 loans have supported entrepreneurs from Smith, 184 grants as well to support community projects, and a total of $4.7 million has been invested by Smith in Dodge County through grants, loans, and programming. On the back, you'll just see a few of our most recent examples of working each area. For example, the Dodge County Environmental Services received $5,000 Early Care and Education Grant, and this is just to, it helped purchase art supplies, crafting projects, STEM projects, and more. You'll see 450 English books and 10 Spanish children's books to Casson, Mantleville, Community Education. Six childcare providers received technical assistance. You'll see our Rural Entrepreneurial Venture here in Casson, that's an example there of our most recent work, some of our loan clients. And a community vitality spotlight, a Paint the Town Grant to West Concord Historical Society. To date, 1.2 thousand children have been supported here in Dodge County, and 29 entrepreneurs have been supported as well. The last portion of my presentation, I just wanted to give you guys some specifics of our work and more detailed numbers here specifically in Casson, as it pertains to our grants and loans and so on. So within the last three years, starting out here, in our work for early childhood support, in our grants, they total $154,500 here in Casson alone specifically. Let's see here. And then just also mention that I told you all about some of our early childcare training sessions. So for example, both in 2023 and 2024, these are region-wide sessions. So 31 early childhood training sessions were offered in 2023. They're free of charge to anyone in our region. We really have 1,000 attendees to these events. Dodge County had 223 in 2023. That was about $11,000 value there. And again, in 2024, Dodge County had about 63 attendees. So we supported one early childcare provider, like I mentioned, on topics like starting parent awareness, family-first providers from Casson. That was in 2023 also. So we're hoping that the support is felt and that the community feels supported, and it's exciting to see the latest projects going on. Moving forward here, also to let you know, combined support with our entrepreneurial activity, our loan activity, $87,500 specifically here in Casson over the last three years. So in total, out of the $331,650 that has been poured into Dodge County, $242,000 has been roughly poured into Casson, just to give you kind of an idea of the support that we've been engaged with. And of course, we couldn't do it without you guys and the communities that we serve. We're just a supplemental agency, so it's all partnership, collaboration, and we're very thankful for that. So that brings me to the conclusion of my presentation. Today, so I believe last year, you guys supported us at the $250 level. We were hoping to ask for a 5% increase to bring that number to $262 for consideration of fiscal year 2026. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions at all, or?
Anybody got any questions for? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right.
Bring that up to discussion later.
Sure.
We can talk about the EDU.
Yeah. Still wouldn't forget. All right, next, in our visitor's council, we've got Irene Aluff, a lot with no sidewalk.
Thank you, guys, for having me here. I don't feel like my issue is that huge, but I talked to Linda, I asked her to speak to somebody who can make a decision, and she put me on an agenda, so thank you. I received a letter from the City of Casson that I, it's an old business. We talked about like three, four years ago that I need to put the sidewalk around my property, just for your information. So I'm the owner of the property lot. It's the corner lot from 7th Street Northeast and 11th Avenue Northeast. It's right next to the ballpark. It's an unimproved lot. I don't have any house at this point on that lot to put some trees over the years, but besides that, that's that. And I'm here to respectfully request ideally a cancellation of this request or two-year extension of the requirement to install the sidewalk on my property. And I understand and support the city's responsibility to maintain the Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, and I understand that we're trying to avoid the legal exposure, but the ADE compliance, they require access, but not redundant obstruction. And that access has already provided a fully connected sidewalk on the opposite side of the street and tied to the city-existent network, and it offers safe, continuous, ADE-compliant access to all public elements. On my street right now, the sidewalk and three houses down, the 7th Street Northeast, four houses down, I'll look at the map, on my street, 10th Avenue Northeast. So, and my understanding is that those, like that big chunk of the neighborhood, they will not be required to install the sidewalk. So I don't feel like me installing the sidewalk on my side, you will still have to cross the, you know, cross the street to continue. If you want to continue, you walk or on the sidewalk. And it's just, it will not improve significantly the accessibility or safety, or it just was in pause, significant cost on me. I'm not opposed to putting the sidewalk in some future. And I know we talked about it like three years ago, but I had some life changes. I recently went through divorce, and I'm not sure if I want to stay in that house, if I want to put the property for sale, or what I'm going to do. I would love to stay in the Casson, I love Casson, but also, if I decide to do sidewalk, I need to save some money because it's a corner lot, so it's going to be a huge amount. It's not like, you know, house in between the houses, so I have a driveway and a little bit of the sidewalk. It's going to be a significant cost to me. I'm trying to get some cost estimate, but I don't even know how much it will cost. I called a couple companies, so two companies did not respond. One will come on Friday, they will look at the property and give me the estimate, how much it costs. So I'll see. So I also want to note that from the letter that I received from the City of Casson, you told me that if I do not put the sidewalk, the City of Casson will put sidewalk, and then you guys will charge me. I would ask, can you give me an estimate how much it cost if the City of Casson put it in? Because I'm just in the process of collecting estimates on this, and see how, what the damage will be. And again, you know, I'm not about opposing the accessibility, but I feel it's about fairness, fiscal responsibility, and making improvements that truly benefits both me and the public. The lot is unimproved, so I feel like maybe it doesn't make sense to put the sidewalk right now because there is no house in it, and if you put the sidewalk there, and then later, there will be a house built and that, so that sidewalk will be destroyed completely, and so that's, all that money will go wasted. I don't want to do that either. So.
Bless you, bless you.
That's me. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have public forum. Just a reminder to everybody, during a public forum, it is a four-minute max per speaker. I have one, sorry. So we have Mrs. Betty Norrie, 505 Fourth Avenue Northwest. If you'd come up to the podium, please.
My address is 505 Fourth Avenue Northwest. On July 24th of 2024, the City Council approved the permit to build the fence. I paid the $535 to the city and met all the conditions of the city fence ordinance. The new survey was done, which was conducted, and cost $600, and no property problems were of concern. On June 10th of 2024, the neighbors, Jerry Byrd, Cody Snow, Steve Johnson, and Todd Brusewicz, all provided the city Steve Johnson, and Todd Brusewich, all provided the city and the planning and zoning board with letters stating they objected to this fence. I request that the city place these rejects in letters in public record tonight. And I have them with me, and when I'm done speaking, I will hand them to somebody. The planning and the planning and zoning board approved my fence plans on July 8th of 2024. In June of 2025, my fence contractor started the fencing project. The city threatened them with litigation and criminal charges, so they stopped working. My son and I, along with his father, started building the fence ourselves. As we were building the fence, the chief of police approached us and asking, asked us to stop on behalf, on behalf of the city attorney. Melanie Lee, Les Lee, sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong. When we refused and kept working, a police officer arrived with a cease and desist letter stating the neighbors did not give us permission to build the fence on our property inside the property line and received a criminal citation along with fines and civil litigation if we continued to work on the fence. I request that the city place this cease and desist letter in the public records at this time, and I also have that with me. Tonight, as you, as you discuss this matter in the closed session, I request that you write my fence contractor and provide him with a hold harmless letter so that he can come back and finish the fence. Thank you. Can I have this?
Thank you. Up next, we have the mayor's report. I just want to thank all the board members that sit on the boards that are volunteers. I'd like to thank all the city staff, and I'd like to thank all the council members for the work they do. I know people don't always hear it, board members don't always hear it, but I want to say thank you. It is a hard job some days. Some days can be pretty tough. So I do appreciate everybody stepping up and doing their part and trying to improve and keep our city going. Public hearing, there's none. Committee report. We'll start with the Cassin Crossing final P U D.
I think what we'll focus on tonight is, there are a number of items in there. We want to move forward with the zoning aspect of this. So we have exhibit A, B, and C, and then there's resolution for Cassin Crossing. There are a couple of other items included in your packet, but we're not looking for approval of necessarily the purchase agreement or anything like that tonight. So it's, it's the zoning component that we're going to focus on. I think Ian's going to focus on tonight.
Yeah. So in your packets, there's a number of items, as Tim mentioned. The council previously approved a preliminary P U D for this proposed subdivision. It's located here on Lot Two, Block One of the Cassin Crossing subdivision. Eighty-seven units of manufactured homes and essentially an expansion of the Windsor Court manufactured home community. Additionally, the community room and storm shelter up in the northwest corner. A highlight of updates that have happened since the preliminary P U D was approved, the biggest thing to mention is the water mains are all now proposed to be public rather than private. So still going to have a water main extending from the south edge of Manorville Avenue South going over here to the subdivision, still providing a future access to the south and the west beyond as the area beyond develops in the future. So in addition to that, the rest of the water mains will also be public now. So that's, that's the major change. We've discussed it with public work staff, the fire chief. Everyone's on board with, with that change. So we've got that for you tonight. As Tim mentioned, a number of the construction plans are left incomplete, but we've been in communication with the applicant and the applicant's engineer to make sure that those items are finalized and brought back to council once, once appropriately finished.
And they are making progress.
And they are making progress, yes. Yes. So this, just a couple of exhibits here. Final P U D exhibits, you can see the lot layouts, the street profile, all of that. Next exhibit here is the landscaping plan finalized version. And then the very last one here, Exhibit C, it's just some details of the community room and storm shelter for you. So a number of conditions included in the resolution of approval for this one. Essentially, all those construction documents and agreements are going to have to come back to city council for review and approval ultimately. But as Tim mentioned, tonight would just be a zoning approval only. Any questions?
Was there any concerns or questions on at planning and zoning, Paul?
This didn't come back to plan.
We didn't, we didn't see this in P and Z.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The EDU has come right back to council.
My apologies.
We did want to note that, you know, so the, the roads are going to be regulation width to, and some of the P U Ds and, and for example, in Windsor Court, you know, we're familiar with that being a little bit narrower, but these will be built to a city spec. So we think that alleviates some of the fire issues that the fire chief may have had too. So overall, we did have a positive recommendation at a staff level for, for this to move forward with the caveats that, that Ian detailed.
Yeah. Any other questions for Ian or Tim?
Resolution approving of P U D of Cassin Crossing.
And it would, this is strictly just for the zoning part of it?
Zoning and design.
Zoning and design schematic, yeah. Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the resolution for the final P U D of the Cassin Crossing.
Make the motion to approve the P U D.
Thank you, Ryan.
Excellent.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
All. Thank you very much. Do we want to discuss any of the purchase agreement or any of that item, or we want to wait until it comes back?
Well, I mean, so one thing to note that, as Ian mentioned, the maintenance utility agreement, that's because we're having a public water main. So each one of these units will be, you know, be metered separately. So there's some, a few things we have to work out there because it's a little different process that we haven't typically dealt with because, you know, in the city, single-family homes are a little different from these. However, Mr. Schrader's got a lot of experience with that aspect of it, so he has a good knowledge base. And we're working with, with the city engineer and to make sure that everything is there. But I think that's in process. Development agreement is similar to many of the development agreements we've seen in the past. What that is, is a development agreement has all the different criteria that are laid out for making sure that everything's done as well feels properly. And then the purchase agreement, there is one bigger change, I think, to that from what we've been looking earlier. We identified through some of the public meetings that there is some drainage tile that running through this property that had been previously placed. Mr. Schrader's working with the contractor to mitigate that issue. And as a result, we've, we've spoken with him, or we've indicated we'd be willing to split those costs because we realize that's a real cost. I know that there's some tile that will have to be dealt with on our side too later on the southwest corner, but, but so that's something that will reduce the overall purchase price. But other than that, I think, you know, as I said, we'll come back to those, but I think those are probably the biggest things right now. I know the city engineer is very involved, and, and the city attorney will be reviewing some things for us to make sure that we're doing everything right. But I, I think we're on the right track. So I appreciate all the work that everyone's putting into it.
You feeling confident?
Am I feeling confident?
Yeah, that things are moving.
I'm quite anxious.
Sure.
I'd like to get any open issues resolved. And I've been in the middle of some engineering discussions, and I'm hoping that they can resolve those items. And, and so that we can, you know, construction season is a very limited timeframe, so it doesn't do us really any good to get this on for December because we can't do it. So we're kind of very up in like, as I said, we're very anxious to get them. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right. So next up, we'll have the preliminary C U D.
C U P, I should say.
C U P. See, I was reading. For the Buckingham Town Home, twin homes.
Yes. So for this one, there was a public hearing held at the planning commission on Monday evening. You'll recall to the previous month, we had a minor subdivision request concerning this property at 206 Third Avenue Northeast. One property right now, but the applicant wants to divide the lot into two and then ultimately construct a twin home property. So one unit on each lot, but attached through a common wall in the center. And to do that, our zoning code requires a conditional use permit. And the purpose of that is to ensure that there is an agreement in place concerning any shared responsibilities that the two property owners might have in the future. So with this one, the public hearing, a lot of residents were present and spoke during the public hearing, many of which were sharing concerns having to do with the state of Third Avenue Northeast, saying that it's in need of maintenance and improvements, other concerns having to do with the state of the aging sewer service lines in that area. Those were the main concerns that I felt were shared.
Drainage.
And the drainage, yes, of course. The drainage, yes. And as a result of those conversations, the planning commission did recommend one additional condition of approval, and that is that the applicant will have to submit a grading and drainage plan, which you don't normally see for developments of this size. Normally, you'd see those for larger developments, commercial developments and larger plats. But in this situation, we felt that having the additional information would give the city council and planning commission the information that they would need in order to move forward with this one. So that is, that's, that's that. Let's see. Additional conditions of approval with this one, that the properties, the structures that are present on the property, the single-family home and a detached garage have to get demolished before the C U P gets recorded. There was a draft declaration included in your packets that was provided by the applicant. So that kind of goes through all the shared responsibilities for the property. One thing to mention that has to do with the sewer service lines. Per our code, each lot is supposed to have its own service line. But if council feels that a shared service line is acceptable, that agreement has to also reflect that, that shared responsibility as well. So any questions from the board?
Paul, if you have anything to add from the meeting?
Yeah, I'll just, I guess, reiterate what Ian said on the comments from the public drainage, the fact that's abouting an alley, really not a road. It's only about half the width of a normal road. Concerns about the sewer infrastructure in that area, which are all good concerns and things that we can probably get on our list of areas to look at. But I think ultimately, the old structure that's there is in disrepair, and it would be a benefit for everybody to have something new and better put in its place.
Oh, we're talking about the issues with the sewer, and I've received an email, I've forwarded on staff, there was concerns that this could overload the existing. Is that a problem? Is, but is the city sewer fine there, or is it the private that's going to be?
Sanitary sewer or storm sewer?
They're talking, sounded like both.
Okay. So obviously, unique lot. Again, hit the nail on the head. There's not a lot of main near that property. So we're not just ordering to install, and I'm, I'll kind of break it up sewer and water, and then we'll talk about storm. But to install two services is going to be very difficult. We're going to have to run a main out there. They're going to have to figure out where even the existing goes and kind of look at the condition. So I think one, you could require two of them. If you're not going to require two of them, then I think they need to one, look at the capacity and the condition, which I think is in the conditions of approval, and then have a maintenance agreement to, to address that. Sanitary sewer, I don't think we're necessarily have a concern about it. The main itself, storm sewer, and again, I haven't taken a deep dive in this because I was just learning about this early this week and got a crash course from public work. So from the property to the south is very flat along the alleyway. So I think water sits in there, and there's some shallow storm sewer, so it freezes. So I guess I'd be looking for some direction on what the expectation of the grading and the drainage plan is because, you know, it's kind of loose-ended. If it is, to look at, one, fixing the pre-existing condition because it looks like water sits in there because it doesn't drain well, and then look at reducing the runoff from that lot. And that's some terms and conditions that I can kind of work with, with the expectation that the storm sewer will be extended to help Third Avenue, you know, the alleyway drain, and then reduce the runoff from that lot because it's a, a place of flooding. We have seen flooding on first because first to the south is very flat also. That's something I can look at, which may end up being potentially a, you know, maybe a joint stormwater program with the property owner, the applicant, and the city picking up some costs. I think that would be a realistic outcome of that. Because I think adding, if you are adding impervious, which I, again, assume that they are, it's, you know, it's not going to be a measurable really increase to the stormwater, but something is not zero, right? So if the idea is that that needs to be reduced, well then I can work with that. But yeah, it's, it's just unique, and it's, it's going to be tough to get multiple services in there. So I get the idea of having a maintenance agreement, and it's a pre-existing drainage issue. So your ordinance does state, don't allow developments that are prone to flooding or going to increase flooding to downstream properties. So it would be probably appropriate to look at it. So I just need to know if that's the direction to, to look at it, what goes downstream, that's, I can work with that. And then we can report back on, on what, say, we put a little storm sewer rain garden there to pick up some of that water and then run a storm sewer to get it to drain well.
I was gonna ask, there might be a rain garden option here with a low-lying area already.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. And then run some storm sewer down to first. I think we have a bigger question on first, you know, between our last sewer backups. I mean, our flows are down, but first also floods too. So, but I think that's more of a city problem. I don't think that that is, you know, that's an existing city problem. So I don't want to abasera it by, you know, creating more impervious area, more runoff downstream. But if we can do it for our little project and then look at the first, you know, long-term planning, I think would be, would be a good direction from the, from the city.
And I know that to the point of the road, I mean, that's something that we're kicking around at staff level, you know, and that'll be something that sounds like the neighborhood's interested in having a reconstruction in their area. It may be something that we need to take a look at and, and murk into our budgets over the next year or two and see if that, you know, is something that we really want to do is do a reconstruction. We know that First, Second Northwest has kind of been on the radar. Those two areas weren't done as part of the last big project, but it may be this area is in need of reconstruction as well.
Yeah, property owners can petition the city council to do projects too. So I think that, you know, people need to understand that. I will say, you know, all the, you know, it's an alleyway, so it's narrow. So maybe you think less costly, right? Well, the east side has double-fronted lots, which then, you know, if we start talking about special assessments.
Problem with that, and how you would do.
You know, benefits is going to be a discussion. Same thing, the, the other lots in the west half, you know, they have frontage on the other road. So it's, you know, it's a unique, unique part of town, really. Probably why it's not been a council priority for some time. So here we are, you know, looking at it, you know, not being, not being fixed up because it's, it's low usage and, yeah, just a unique spot. So, but open to help, help them solve the problem. So if it is drainage the main concern, and then if the council's fine with single services and they can, you know, show that that's going to be adequate and meet certain requirements for the buildings, then I, I think we just have a maintenance agreement. So both property owners in the future, whoever owns those townhouses, know that they have shared responsibility, and they're on an unconventional service. And it's a private issue now today, and we'll make it a private issue in the future. But as long as we can help protect them so they know, I think that would be appropriate.
So we'd make sure we put that in as?
Well, I think the onus is on the, the onus is on the developer to solve these issues in conjunction with what the city engineer is talking about. So I think that, I mean, I guess in your, your opinion with the shared service, would the maintenance agreement be better, or would it be better to have separate services?
Would absolutely be better to have separate services.
I mean, I, I don't know if that's something we shouldn't consider. I mean, I think from clarity's perspective, it might be better to have separate services. Obviously, it would be a little bit more work for the developer because they're going to have to figure some things out.
I think it's going to drive cost that it's not going to be a viable project. So we're going to have that on the.
Does, does the existing service go through private property to get to the main?
I don't know that they've located the existing service particularly. It's a, it's a historic part of the area. So.
But we, we could bring water and sewer services up there, but we're serving one lot potentially, and it's going to be a, you know, it's going to be a big lift, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I'm guessing project doesn't go at that point, and that may not be the outcome the city council wants. So I caution us on, I think it's going to be infeasible to require that. We can have the conversation with the developer, that's fine. But you don't run water and sewer mains for hundreds of feet. But you don't run water and sewer mains for hundreds of feet and tear up roads for, you know, it's all expensive. So, might be a little bit of a, you know, bend on that one and just protect future property owners and city councils, so.
Well, we definitely, we definitely got to make sure we look at every option. I mean, wouldn't hurt to talk to the developer just to see, just to, but, you know, because that's the ultimate, but if it's not feasible, I understand. But at least it doesn't hurt to talk to them about it.
And I think even knowing what the existing sewer and water is and where it goes and how it's sized.
Would be, yeah.
Because there could be a water flow pressure, a flow issue through the water service being undersized too. That's not going to serve and then we got a bad outcome and nobody wanted either, so.
Right.
So I'm happy to kind of run herd on that with Public Works and?
Yeah, I think I'd like to table this for now until we can get some more information from Public Works, the engineer, the developer. I want to make sure we're not rushing into it and then, so, that's, do we need a motion or not?
Yeah, I think we'd have a motion to table.
I would make the motion to table the preliminary CUP for the Buckingham Twin Homes.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Next, we had a CUP for electronic sign for Quimby Collision.
All right. Okay, so I'll just show up some plans here up on the screen. So this is at 707th Street Circle Southeast, just on the south side of Highway 14, Quimby's Collision Center. The sign that they want to construct is, it's a two-sided sign. Each panel is six feet by 12 feet and it's atop a 10-foot pole, so total structure is 16 feet in height. It is an electronic sign and our code does require a CUP whenever an electronic sign is going in a commercial or industrial district. So that's the reason for the CUP here tonight. In other parts of Cassin, you might see a CUP with an electronic sign having a specific condition that it has to turn off at a certain time of the evening. I think that's mostly in the C, let's see, C2, general commercial districts. This is the C3 highway commercial district. So you see, there's not as much of a concern with residential areas being close that having the sign turn off at a certain time of day would be much of an issue. For example, Sakers has an electronic sign CUP and there's, doesn't have any conditions of approval going with that one. And so with this one, staff didn't recommend any conditions of approval going with it. And the Planning Commission didn't recommend any conditions of approval with it either, but they did recommend approval of the CUP overall. So, just asking for approval of this one and then really just be subject to billing permit approval after that.
Little bit easier one.
I don't really have anything to add. Ian basically covered everything, it was pretty cut and dry. We asked about Sakers, obviously it's just two lots down, has what's basically an identical sign to what they're asking for, so.
Well, with that?
I'll make the motion to approve the sign.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
And one thing on that, now that we've discussed that, I had called Ian earlier and the business owner had called. This is his first time he's ever done this and he was a little nervous because he wasn't quite sure of the output of how it would work. So, for future, I would like to see if we can at least give people information, you know, stating, you know, where they're located, what potential conditions they could have or not have, you know, because, just to make sure, just to give them some clarity, a little bit of ease in their mind.
Sure, well, we appreciate the business in town here. We know that they're taking over a pre-existing, so we're glad to have them. And certainly, we can always try to improve our process, you know, we don't get these that often in this case.
Oh, no, yeah.
Something that, I think this might be the first one that Ian's actually had to deal with, so.
But it was just kind of the call I got, he was a little like, oh, I ain't quite sure. And I wanted to make sure, you know, that we could at least give a little information, no guarantees, but we can at least give them some information upfront.
Sounds good.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Cassin Meadows Eighth preliminary and final plat.
All right, so I'll just bring up the exhibit here on the screen. This is in northeast Cassin. And so, you can see here, this is a proposed subdivision of eight residential lots, all for single-family homes. This is in the R1 single-family residential district, low-density residential in our comprehensive plan. So, everything fits with that aspect. Just a couple of things with engineering that had to be addressed and those have been communicated with the applicant. And so, they know what they have to do, just a couple of small things there. We also talked about the size of Lot 1 being just a smidge too small. So it shouldn't be too much of a challenge to get that fixed there. And yeah, like I said, the applicant is aware of everything that they have to change for that, so.
There was a little discussion on storm water ponds.
About the storm water ponds. But the storm water pond, you can see it here on this exhibit. It was appropriately sized with this additional subdivision in mind, so no issues that we foresee with that.
I will say, I did note at the planning and zoning meeting that I was not entirely satisfied with the lack of connectivity, the roads that are to the northeast. However, the developer is interested in doing a cul-de-sac and so, I mean, we do the best we can with that, so.
I guess I'll just add that the engineer representing the developer was there at the meeting as well and he said he received the comments that he got from the city engineer and that they agreed with all of them and were working to make those updates.
If we were to approve it, I would like to make sure those updates are taken care of before we issue.
Absolutely.
You know, make sure that they're listed and corrected, any issues that you have. Any other questions, comments?
How are they going to fix that small size of Lot 1?
Well, I think that our guideline, I thought was that they need to shift the property line about a foot and then that plat would reflect that slightly larger lot. It's not a, it's a very, I think it's within, within 100 square feet of being sized properly. That was kind of the thought process, I think, for that one. It should be, as Ian mentioned, we didn't think it would be overly difficult. We ran into that one on the, as you recall, with the common acres situation. So, hopefully try to avoid it before it gets approved.
Yeah, I think it was Oscar Meadows.
Oscar Meadows, that's right. I don't know, there's so many different Meadows and Acres and, I don't know.
That's a good problem, yeah. Well, I would take a motion to approve with the added conditions, corrections.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Brian. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you, Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, up next, old business. Discussion of no sidewalk at the LDS Church.
So, Ian, do you want to talk about this one or I can?
Uh, well, just going back to this, there was also a final plat on the agenda.
Two motions.
I would ask for two motions, please.
You gotta write them in two lines for me.
No doubt.
So we approved the preliminary, now we're looking for a motion for the final plat as well, with the corrections.
I'd like to motion to approve the final plat.
With the conditions?
Yep.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Proceed, yes, thank you.
Put them in one line, it confused me.
There you go, yeah, trying to confuse us all.
Now we'll go on to old business.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've talked about the sidewalks a little bit tonight. This was one that Linda identified, thank you Linda for catching that. As we reviewed the sites, so there are a number of sites in town where there was gaps. So, we're looking for guidance on the, there's a map included in your packet there. So I think that's what we're looking for, isn't it, Linda? Kind of guidance on what we'd like to let the folks know at the Church of Latter-day Saints. They have a substantial amount of sidewalk. You can see there on the map where it cuts off. In this case, there's no, no access through there. So, we're looking for your feedback on what you'd like us to see us do there. Or if you'd like us to do the same as we've done with the other ones.
Is there a reason they didn't do sidewalk on all sides?
I wasn't here when that occurred, so I don't know what the thought process was there.
They must have built when you had to have a sidewalk putting because they have it on one side.
I mean, they've got it along Parkview there and then they?
Fifteenth probably hadn't started yet, I'm assuming Parkview had. They were probably one of the earlier.
I would guess what probably happened is that, you know, all the sidewalk that was, you know, typically like when my house was built, sidewalk was installed, same for you, I'm sure, with a newer home. And so, you know, the folks, you know, Mr. Burt and Mr. Tomac who live Russ North there, their home got built, their contractor who built their home, whether it was Bigelow, whoever it was, installed the sidewalk right after they got everything else done. Well, in this case, when that church was built, and I'm guessing it was built in that probably later part of the last decade, their contractor didn't complete it. At that time, when it was constructed, I don't know if that was 2018 or 2017 or when it was, you know, they weren't held to that standard. So, they did build it along Parkview, but they didn't build it along those other roads.
I think we're going to ask citizens to finish their sidewalks in those typical same areas we have them to.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to be honest with you, that was kind of my perspective too. I think we could use the same process, which is we have the petition waiver process whereby a property owner can petition the city to install that and then they can have a sus to their property tax bill and they can pay it off over a longer period of time. And I know that it will be a substantial cost to them, but I think you're right. I mean, they may not be a tax-paying entity, but I think we do want to hold them to the same standard. But, that's just my viewpoint, doesn't necessarily mean that I'm speaking to the council on this.
Yeah, I can add on that. So you just mentioned petition waiver going through the city. We've also on other projects, specifically on sewer and water, had a property owner complete the work themselves because this is, you know, sidewalk that should potentially done by the property owner and then just submit the invoice and do petition waiver that way.
That means, sure.
So essentially being the bank, yeah. Something to consider, that way the city has less involvement. More you keep your engineer out of going through assessment projects, the better the bottom line is going to be for everybody. So I don't care to get involved and we don't have to, so.
This area is 100% developed, there's no empty lots right now, so it'd just be nice to see that get finished.
That's correct, yeah, I believe this is 100% developed, yes.
Is there an option, being it's such a big project, that they could do one sidewalk one year and the second one the next year if it's cost-effective for their builder? Maybe it's cheaper for them to do both.
I would think it'd be cheaper just to do it all at once.
But, I mean, is that an option?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're certainly willing to work with them, just like we would any other property owner, but it's like a plan.
I'd just say that for all of these, I think, one, I would say, like as a city, we might have dropped the ball a bit by letting go as long as we did and not getting this taken care of sooner. So anything, anything we can do to try and help these get completed. Because the sidewalks to nowhere are, they look terrible, like they look really unfinished. I know the lady who was talking earlier about her sidewalk mentioned, and I looked at the map, the satellite images, and she was right, like two houses down from hers, there's a stretch of like four houses that are all missing a sidewalk on Seventh. And then it starts up and picks up again. So like, and then some areas, obviously there's sidewalk only on one side and not on the other. So, I guess I'd just like to see that maybe, do whatever we can as a city. Maybe we reach out to people and ask them, hey, the city's going to try and get somebody in and just do a whole bunch of sidewalks, do you want to be included on that? And then we'll split the costs. You mentioned putting it on property tax over so many years. Something we can do to try and get these done and make it as easy on the property owners as we can. And maybe we don't get them all in one year. But, because I, I don't know, if Linda's doing what I was doing and just looking at satellite images, trying to find where sidewalks are missing, you know, we're probably going to miss places where we probably should have had a sidewalk and there isn't one, right? So, we kind of got a little bit of a case-by-case, we got to find them, figure out whether it should have a sidewalk or not and then make a plan to deal with it.
And what you're talking about Seventh is another issue that we've run into. I don't know those were even evaluated because you have two different subdivisions. So you've got Blaine's Eighth and Blaine's Eleventh. And I think in one subdivision, the city required sidewalks. In the next subdivision, in the next one, they didn't. But I agree, I mean, the goal is to try and provide that connectivity because it really defeats the purpose if you have a sidewalk to nowhere. So, I know that we've identified a list and a number of those letters went out, so. And some of them have been in correspondence with us about how it's going to work and how it's going to be done. So, no, I agree 100%, Paul, I think that's the right way. And I think we did, I don't remember how many panels, I think they did 40 panels up in Cassin Meadows of repair work. So we do have a decent idea about what the price per panel would be for concrete. And if people are interested, we're, I think, maybe we don't get the city engineer involved, you know, but, but, you know, those contractors know how to do their sidewalk pretty well too generally. So I, on a project like this, you know, we want to make sure that's done properly, of course, too, so.
Yeah, and if we could pull together more projects, it's, then it's easier for the contractor actually to come bid it. Because a lot of times, contractors have a hard time bidding small jobs because they're trying to offset their costs and trying to come in and do a small job, it's hard for some of them.
Yeah, I mean, part of it, my consideration has been, in certain cities where I've worked, we've had a complete streets policy where the council says, well, these are the things we want to have included in a street project. And sometimes sidewalks or something like that, or there's other components. And that's something that I've considered too for Cassin, bringing to your attention. It might be something that'd be beneficial as we do construction in the future. All of our new subdivisions do, some of the historical ones or some of the older ones don't, so. But, yeah, no, I appreciate that feedback. So, the guidance I'm getting, what I'm trying to take away is that we need to communicate with them and we'd like to have that connected. If they can give us a timeline or we can work with them to try and provide financing or make sure that that works properly, that's where we want to go with it. Just like we would with any of the other residents in town.
We asked residents three years ago to do this and several of them did complete their projects in a timely manner and we want to honor the fact that we asked them and they did do their job.
No, I agree 100%, so thank you very much for that feedback.
All right, next is our gambling ordinance, that's coming back to us.
Sure, so at the last meeting, there were a few questions, so we revised that for clarity's sake. And I think if those, you know, those revisions will hopefully make it a little easier. Just denoting there that only two, you won't be able to have it in only two, let's see here, two establishments. So, for example, that number four that was questioned, so if it's more than two, we would reject the application.
I have one question on Section 8, number subdivision 6. It says the council salary received the police chief's report.
Background check.
Right, but what, just that, could we just change that to the police department per se? If there was not a police chief or they were gone during, so it states that it's?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. We can even just call it a police background check, I think that's fine. So with that change, I would? Law enforcement, okay.
Not to take it away from the chief, but I just?
He's on vacation, I still, you know, they still want to get their permits, so I understand. He goes on vacation once in a while.
I know, so I just, I saw that, I just thought I wanted to clarify and?
Sure, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay, that is the only thing that I jumped on after the first time we looked at it.
Sure.
Anybody else has any?
Yeah.
With no other questions, I would take a motion to approve the gambling ordinance.
I think a motion to approve with the noted change.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you, Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, everybody. All right, new business. We are looking at some city council meeting dates changes for November and December just due to the holidays and, so. Everybody get a chance to look at their calendars to see if November 19th would work. We would do one meeting in November due to the Thanksgiving holiday. And then, after that, we're looking at December due to the meeting on 24th, moved the meeting from the 24th to the December 3rd. So it'll be the 3rd and?
And we keep the 10th?
That's right, yes.
Yeah, that's your word.
For everybody?
Without objection, then we'll just move forward with those things. Thank you, and we'll publish those for the public.
Thank you very much. Next is the fire department pension request.
So there's a couple of items in here, and I actually, I think I speak about them, I report a little bit. So you can see their statistics for the year they provided to those for us. Last year when we made a, I think we did a 25 or 30% increase to the pensions, we said we would take it back more regularly, we would take a look at it a little bit more regularly. And so, we're doing evaluation on that this year. And I'm recommending we do a $100 increase from 3,200 to 3,300 per year. I think that'll leave them at close to the same percentage that they're funded at previously. We do look at their performance of the portfolio, so it's possible that there'll be a larger increase next year if their portfolio performs well. The other thing that I was just going to mention, and it's something that I've included in the budget for tonight, so I will be seeking? so I will be seeking action on the fire pension. The other item would be, they had requested the fire department for an increase to the wages for firefighters. Currently, they're $10 an hour. I'm recommending a 10% increase, so $11 an hour. We possibly would try and match the Dodge County ambulance at $12 an hour in '27. But, I think that's, it would, something would cost about $9,000 extra, including $1,000 that's factored in for officer positions. So, I guess, like, two things. Fire pension, recommending a $100 increase per year, that's a normal inflationary increase, like a normal pension would operate, normal social security or something like that, and then a 10% increase to the fire department's wage. Those are the two recommendations I have on those items.
And then on their wage, you know, I'd like to make that something we can look at every year or two years, so we don't get a big jump, you know. No, I mean, even a 10% is, I mean, it's a dollar. It seems like, but 10% is a-
Well, it's, like I said, it's still $9,000.
Yeah, it's a substantial raise, so, but we wanna make sure we're looking at it yearly, and that, make sure that we can do it in nice gradual steps.
Sure.
So, they benefit and the city benefits, because they do a good job.
Yep. I just wanna comment, Tim, on the $100, I think you said you were thinking about doing like a $100 every year increase?
Um, that's not, I didn't say that, but it's something that I would evaluate each year.
Okay.
I would likely, the increases, obviously, as the pension rises, $100 becomes a lower percentage.
Of course.
So, it's possible that the percentage would, if I maintain, let's say, 3.25% or something like that in line with inflationary increases, we would probably see that dollar amount rise over time.
Yeah, I just think maybe for clarity, if you can kind of come up with a guideline of, like, we'll consider increasing it as long as the surplus, it says at 126% right now, like, as long as they maintain at least 120%, we'll consider it, so that we kind of have clarity-
Yeah, and that is the guideline that I follow, actually, what I'm looking at is make sure that they maintain that around 120% funding of their pension.
Yeah, so if it's a bad year, and it drops to like 118, we might skip that year on its update.
Yeah, no, as I said, in, you know, looking at the portfolio and looking at their performance, and that's why I've requested these numbers to come to us each year from the fire department.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Just need a motion.
So, do you want a motion on-
I'd be looking for a motion on the pensions for sure, and if you're open to the wage change, then that'd be a budgetary thing, but we'd be looking for a motion of that, too.
Okay.
Separate motions?
So, yeah, it'd be separate motions. So, right now, I'd look at the fire department pension increase of $100.
I'll make the motion for the pension increasing increases.
All right, thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we, budget wise, do we wanna look at the 10% increase in wages? Yeah, I mean-
Not, okay, how do I say that the right way? I feel like that's a good start. Yeah, well deserved.
And it is included, so, you should have gotten a link, and Sarah will be talking about this in a little bit, but we did include that preliminary, in the preliminary number for the fire department. So, it wouldn't be a change to what's already been, what's been published to you.
I would make the motion to increase pay by 10% or $1.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, everybody. Okay, next is an application for temporary liquor license for the summer commerce. So, that's for their Oktoberfest?
That's right, yeah. So, they have a little different program of operations, I think, and Ian can maybe speak to it, or Linda more than me, but they're looking at having alcohol being available on the street during their Oktoberfest, in the area that's gonna be blocked off from traffic.
Uh, yeah, that's right. So, two already licensed providers of alcohol, Tammy's and the Legion, would be serving the alcohol on their own premises. The only thing that is seeking permission from the council this evening is just the walking around with an open container within the defined area of those two blocks on Main Street that are being closed off as part of Oktoberfest, which council previously approved, so.
They'd done that last year, correct?
Not the open container situation. No. Last year was the first year that Oktoberfest was actually closed down for the street. The open container would be a new thing.
So, this is basically like, they're gonna put up signs around the area and say, you know, no open containers past this point?
They could do that, yeah.
And then the police guys will stand around there and watch?
Do you have any feedback, Josh, on that?
It'd be similar to firing a ant, if they were to do that, Section Street, five all same signs.
Okay.
They don't ask, so.
How, how long is this gonna be running for on that day?
I'm gonna, oh, let's see-
Put the hours on the-
I don't remember. It's actually kind of an all day thing. They have different events going. I don't think that the, I don't anticipate there being a ton of consumption during the day, but I think as it gets closer to the evening time, you'll probably see more of it, so.
I don't see the hours.
I don't see it on this one.
I would, I would- And their previous permit-
I would like to see the hours for that, to make sure, you know, make that one-
Yeah, I mean, I think you approved the hours in a previous meeting. I'm not sure if it was last month or-
For the closure of the road, or for the-
Well, it was for the closure of the road. I just wanted to know what their timeframe of the open container would be. I'd like to-
Same as the-
Uh, let's see here.
What time can they legally start selling alcohol that day?
Okay, so-
It's Saturday, I think it's 8:00.
I have, I have an email, I have an email from Liz Palmer from the Legion. She says they want the open container restriction lifted between 1:30 PM to 4:00 PM, the day of the event.
Would that work for the police department?
Okay.
Yeah.
Would that-
Last dumb question. Is that glass or just plastic? Is that glass or plastic? Does that matter? I mean, I just-
Oh, it wouldn't matter.
To clean up and whatnot.
No, I don't think that's included in their request, so I don't know. Do you wanna restrict him to something?
I would think no glass, just anything.
Assuming they wouldn't let you leave with a glass just because it's theirs.
Yeah, so they have to bring it back.
I don't know, I just-
We could just let it go, and if there's a problem, when they ask us next year, we might have to say, yeah, no glass next year.
And we'd wanna make sure they have extra trash containers out there, and make sure there's no mess.
And this is put on by the chamber. I'm sure they're not gonna wanna leave a mess behind, right?
Yep, but I just, you know, I'd like to note that, you know, as a courtesy.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, so, you approved their permit back in June, and on there, they noted there would not be any roll-off dumpsters or porta bathrooms. I think that if we, you know, we wanna add some bat, you know, some garbage as part of this amended permit that they're requesting, I think that's probably set, I mean, I'd think that would make sense. I don't think necessarily they have to have a dumpster, and we can provide some bins for them. But, I would want them to take care of those, because I'm not gonna call our city staff back in at 8 o'clock at night to come and pay them overtime to do this, I don't think. So, no, I think that's something we would add on to their, I think that's very fair.
Between that and then, you know, do you wanna go no glass, or do you wanna just leave it and see?
I, I think Paul might have the right of it. I mean, I guess my perspective is if they don't do a good job governing themselves, then we certainly don't have to allow this permit next year at all.
That's fine.
I mean, they're adults, they know how this should work, and the chamber does a good job representing the city, so.
All right. With those extra added, I would take a-
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, everybody. Up next, water department snowplow bid.
Sure, including your package, you've got a bid for a water department snowplow. This was something that they need. It allows them to access the, the pumps, the lift stations, things like that. It's a smaller item. So, they're looking at acquiring this item at, before the snow season starts. They have money budgeted for it. It'll come out of their previously budgeted equipment fund, so it won't be any alteration to the budget.
With that, there's no questions?
And so, I mean, you have two here, so I'm asking, yeah, so I think, we're looking for the Trucking America bid, the cheaper-
That's what I was gonna do.
Yep, absolutely.
The water department has a necessity to have their own plow, I guess, I just want-
So, it's a timely access. Those, I mean, they're gonna get called out during a snowfall to make sure that those are accessible if there's any issue. I mean, that's how it was explained to me, and I think it's, I think it's fair.
Okay.
Motion to approve the bid from Trucking America for the snowplow for the water department.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Got that. Uh, next is administrator's report.
All right, so we have a, yeah, short and sweet. We have a long meeting already, so I won't belabor that. Some of these items, as I bring up my report here, we've already talked about. We discussed the fire department pensions, things like that. It's, uh, let's see, where are we at here? And I wanna leave time for Sarah here, so, there it is. Okay, as Senator Nelson mentioned, state revenues do look solid, so that's a good thing. They look better than expected this time. That does go up and down depending on, we just had tax collections in April, so I would hope that this quarter would be a positive one for the state. 16th Street extension, we had the pre-con meeting with that. It's, uh, sounds like they're expecting to start after Labor Day and be completed by November 15th. So, there will be some rerouting of the trail and the dump road possibly. However, it should remain open, so that won't affect things. I spoke a little bit to the superintendent, and they're, we're gonna keep them apprised of it. Once it opens up, that'll, that'll make it a little easier for the school. So, as I'm, as you're well aware, it's been funded by grants the city applied for in MSA dollars. There's a small portion that'll be funded through our street construction budget. That's a non-state aid accessible portion. The 2026 budget, so we have a lot of information included in tonight's presentation for the ClearGov. I'll let Sarah talk about that more, but just so you remember, the 25th of August, we do have Mr. Bubani coming to present his project scope and all the things that he adds into that, as well as making some recommendations for bonding. We'll be looking at bonding in September for the projects that are, that are out there currently on the street for us. Dodge County ambulance, Mr. Fox is here tonight to talk about that. I'll be looking for some direction from you all, probably shortly, so I can relay that to the folks over there. Cannabis licensing, we have had someone express interest, so we'll be studying their application as they move forward. Linda's got a version of an application she's preparing for us. We'll have that in your council packets probably in September, or maybe even sooner than that if we need to. We can also email it out if it, if it comes up faster than that. We've talked about P and Z. So, as Mr. Schrader said, we're interested in making sure that the engineering is done right, and the construction plans are done right for Cass and Crossings. We do think they're making progress, and we're hoping that can come to fruition here in the next couple of months. And then the data request form and policy I've included in the packet. We had the newspaper asking questions about that, and so I've laid out, you know, and at times, some things we may not consider a data request. We've, we've answered those without requiring the form. However, you know, we do have a form, and there is a process to be filled out. You know, if you were asked by the newspaper for information, you're certainly able to go through the city, and there's no requirement that you would necessarily have to furnish that. However, you know, we try to work with our news media partners, so you've got that information there.
On that note, on that request, I'm, after receiving text and email of unhappy newspaper person, I'm looking at the city from now on to abide by the official form from future data requests. If it's a simple email, quick answer, yes. But, if they want any kind of data, I think the city starts and just stays on the track of doing it for every request, be it newspaper, individual, anybody, just to make it more clear and transparent and less headache down the road for people.
Yep, that sounds good. And if anyone does get a question from someone, you can always direct those back to the city hall here. A couple of things I just wanted to include for informational purposes. The United States had a new electricity demand record in July. You can see the megawatts, 759,180 megawatts. So, it's electricity is, it's continued to be a hot topic. I was attending an MMUA meeting today, and the discussion was there. You can see in there the MMU eight rates are looking at a 4% to 5% increase, so that's what we've budgeted for their changes this year. And then I included one more item here. This is the crock or sewer forgiveness request. And I separated this out, because this is a recommendation to deny. This was a request for someone who had sod, and it doesn't fall into what we consider to be the category we would typically apply. So, we're gonna alter the form slightly. We don't want people to be confused about it, but I wanted to let you know that that's the plan for this, would be to deny. New constructions are, do not currently accept it as part of the sewer refund program. Unless the city council wants to change that.
We have talked and remind, tried to remind people to get the second meter if you're going to continue to water. I built a new home in 2019, 2020. We ate those costs full well, knowing that you're gonna have to water your lawn.
Yeah, and I mean, the situation here is, you know, our, we've gotten much better with the builders. The builders have a good knowledge of these. This was a home that was purchased in late fall, you know, and there was, they didn't, the builder didn't install the sod. So, the person, next spring, put it in. So, I mean, we do encourage them to look at that secondary meter, because I know when I installed, I should have put one in my house. You know, I didn't, I didn't know it. I, you know, I would have paid for it with that one usage, and I would have had a nice external meter, which would have cut my costs a lot for watering the, thankfully, the summer hasn't been quite as bad for the vegetable garden. But, anyway, just a friendly reminder too, when you do a second meter, there's a cost to the meter, and then there is a monthly charge whether you use it or not. Just so people do know that, and I know that personally, because I do have the second meter. But, it paid for itself time and time again. I, so, but just so people do know, there is a little cost to it every month. So, that's all I've got for tonight, if there's any questions.
I need to make a snarky comment. So, you mean to tell me mandating electric vehicles makes us use more electricity? Color be shocked.
Yeah, well, I thought maybe if the car had solar panels on it, then it would just drive without-
They do on RVs.
Yeah, fair enough.
With, you mentioned the school and 16th, when is the 57 between Cass and Manerville being done?
Are you talking the Millen overlay project that Midna's gonna do? I'd heard it was starting here in short time.
Well, I thought it was gonna be after the big iron.
It'll be after Labor Day, after the big iron classic, is what I thought.
So, those two projects will be coinciding, so it might be really-
Well, 57, 57, they'll be shut down, they'll blow it off, and they'll shut one lane.
I'm thinking more of with transportation for busing and how that could impact times. The bus transportation director came and reached out to me and asked about that project, if it would coincide timeline with 16th. And I said, I don't know, and I thought I would ask.
No, we won't have 16th open by the time they're doing that project.
Oh, just with, yeah.
And then the dump road's gonna stay open, too, so it shouldn't be a problem.
And the, the input I got on 57 is that it'll be open, or there'll just be one lane, flaggy around, go around. So, it'd be a partial delay, but it's construction season. And something that needs to be done.
I agree. Just wanted to know what to relay back to them.
Okay. Uh, next-
Sure.
Oh, yeah. So, we're looking for a motion to deny the sewer, which was in the engineer's report.
My report.
Under-
Sewer forgiveness.
Sewer forgiveness. So, we're looking for a motion to approve that.
Motion to deny the request.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you. Next, engineer's report.
All right, short and sweet, nothing much tonight. Tim already mentioned 16th Street's schedule, beginning around Labor Day there, and completion date's November 15th. So, in your council packet is the, just subcontractors and suppliers there for the project. But, maybe more importantly, for the council southwest reconstruction, that's going slower than what we had anticipated. So, there's been some just plum, very plumery discussions about if we're gonna get that project done or not this year. So, what I've kind of left the contractors, well, let's see how things go here, try to pick up the pace. But, number one, don't tear any streets open that we're not gonna get rebuilt before this construction season is, that's non-negotiable. I have a very upset council, and I'll be able to at least talk to them about if we have a delay, you know, we can have those discussions. But, if we don't have a road rebuilt, they're probably gonna be unhappy. So, just giving you the kind of forewarning that we're probably gonna be back having something before the council at some time. Now, what that means, we'll talk about. Just wanted to give you guys a heads up that it's been slower than almost, pretty rainy this summer, and they started at the low end, because that's where the sewer is, so water flows to the low end of the project, so it's kind of a mess. And I think they lost a fair amount of days, which, it's the spring, it happens, but, yeah, we're just telling them to better pick up the pace. We got some concerns they're gonna get it done, and don't tear open stuff, you're not gonna get fixed back up, so.
How many days behind do you think they are in their schedule?
I don't, I don't know, I haven't been, I haven't, I haven't, we've been, we've requested a revised schedule from the contractors, so I'll know more then, so.
So, on that notice, if they don't finish this fall, and we have to start it next spring, and we planned on having it done, with the engineer on site, does that become the contractor's burden?
That's gonna be likely the conversation.
Okay.
So, we have something in our construction contract called liquidated damages, which is if you don't meet the completion date, liquidated damages are on. It usually goes into negotiation with the contractor on what our damages actually were, which a lot of time is our time, because, you know, we budgeted for a certain amount. I don't think the city should eat, I don't think we should eat. It's the contractor's, you know, obligation to meet that, and if they don't, then there's, you know, certain financial ramifications of it.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Upsetting property- Upsetting property owners and having multiple-year construction. I mean, that's not ideal either, but it's also construction, and we can have that conversation, too, when, when we get there. Just wanna give you guys a heads up. I don't ever, like, surprise council members, and if you drove around the neighborhood, you'd probably figure out pretty quickly, it should probably be more done than what's currently done, so just a heads up. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brandon.
Questions, let me know.
Next, finance.
Yeah, so, I mean, the finance report is the same as any other month. If you got any questions, you can ask me now or email me later. Um, the ClearGov thing, Tim and I have been working tirelessly.
Sarah's put a lot of time into it, so I appreciate all the work she's put in there.
Yeah, and I emailed it to you guys right before the meeting, 'cause we didn't know for sure if this was gonna work. And so, it's just basically to go through, and can I show you where it is? This is exactly how it's gonna show up, and then you wanna go to the left-hand side.
And I can swap with you for a second.
Oh, that's right, he was gonna...
Don't you use ClearGov?
So... Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
No, it's, um, introduction includes like eight different sections.
Yeah, it's too far away.
There's a lot more words than, uh, used to happen with the spreadsheet that was sent out. The only one we really need to open up is the demographics for the, the RAO effect.
We are really excited about this, though, and I think, I think you will be, too, so, you know, it lays out, you know, introduction, there's a lot of items that, like you said, we don't necessarily have to go through, but it took a lot of time to type them up, so you should definitely read all of them in depth, uh, you know?
If you just open up the demographics, it can...
Sure, here we go.
That's the part that was kinda fun. That's what attracted us to, you know, just to, if anybody's gonna look at, they're gonna look at this and kinda just really, I, I got a lot of information on Cassin that I did not know existed, and so, that was good. Um, you know, we don't wanna take a lot of time. You can do this tonight in your home, but it is kinda cool to see how it's all laid out and the differences, you know, home value.
Right. So, yeah, I mean...
Yeah.
Go ahead, keep going, Sarah.
Well, if you go to the executive summary, I don't, I don't think we really need to belabor this. We've been here a while already.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, yeah, the budget overview just kinda, you know, outlines what, what the challenges were. Uh, but then the, the real reason we got this was the fund summaries, the next page, and pull that down. And so it gives, you know, for all the general funds, and it, we've got it laid out, so we get fiscal year twenty-four actuals, and then twenty-five budget, twenty-six budget, so you can just see all three at the same time. And then they got all kinds of charts, and they're interactive, as you can see.
So these are your preliminary twenty-twenty-six that are entered already?
That's right.
Budgeted twenty-six, correct.
Cool, okay.
Yeah.
Is there a way to see the detail?
Well, there is detail, if you keep scrolling, I don't know how much more detail you, you're looking for.
It breaks it down by every category, so you can kinda see through, uh, revenues and expenditures by the org numbers.
Right.
So each of these, and you know, you've got the different revenues, and then the expenditures are on the, as you keep going down. There is quite a bit of detail. If there are things that you're not seeing that you're interested in, no, of course, we'll try and, we can try and get those for you, too. They, they have worked with us to, you can see the percentage of budget and things like that.
Yeah, we could break it down even more, but...
Yeah.
There's a ton of information here already.
I like the spreadsheet.
Wow. I didn't.